We'll start our board meeting, because Mr. Welsh is here. Presentation moved again. You're all up there on our June 27 Lincoln County Board of Education Board meeting. This time I'm going to ask Mr. Tucker to be the lead in the indication of a good place for the leadership.
Yeah. Again, Lord, thank you for opportunity again to just be here tonight. Lord, we ask that you be with all the decisions that we make tonight and the decisions we make go out and make our county better, our schools better, and for our students and our staff. Lord, we ask that you be with us all if we go home tonight. Keep us safe. That's it all. Your precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in our nation in this court with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, that is consider approval of June 6, 2022 board minutes. Do I have a motion to accept these? The opposing moves to approve them. Bradley's second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Consider approval of agenda per policy 1.403. Dr. Heath, I have an aid added Highland Rim School Committee report with Dr. Daniels. B, I have a service contract, some language or something to do with an SFE contract.
Uh, no, it's not SFE. It's servicing of equipment.
Okay, just a service contract. Then under seven, I've got Interquest K-9 Detection Contract. Then under nine, outstanding accounts payable, I've got Blanche and Highland Rim School with football equipment.
Okay.
And if you've got items to add.
Points of information, the board training catalog, which you guys all have it at your desk there. I was going to mention that during the points of information, and that would be an addition, but so I'll add that just in case you have any questions or I can comment on one here.
Does any board member have anything to add? Motion to approve?
No move.
Dr. Moon, second. Bradley's second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Motion carries. This time item three, I want to commend all the board members that put the time and effort into the items required to make us a board of distinction. And Tennessee School Board Association representative, Mr. Pat Welsh from the Tallahassee City is going to come up and give us a video, present us a plaque.
Quick, quick mention here. I am Pat Welsh from Tallahassee. I'm the South Central Region Director for TSBA. And y'all will be congratulated. And I've had a great visit. I told Mr. Stevenson that I had enough time to go out towards the football field. Fifty-two years ago this fall, I played in the game, not successfully. Coach Evans was there then, and I think he was a director here for a long time, and was a great coach. That was a great experience that night. The fair was going on at the same time, and you'd never seen so many people in cars. And it was an incredible environment, and Coach Evans had been real happy with the gate that night. There's, I believe, 146 systems in the state and nowhere close to all those board distinctions. Y'all have met the requirements in four key areas: planning, policy, promotion, and board development. And it is my pleasure to present this plaque.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Congratulations to the board. If you look over there on that wall behind Ms. Tom and Ms. Smith and Ms. Fisher there, there's like five or six of those plaques lined up over there. So we'll need to find some way to display those over here in a more prominent location. You guys have added over the last couple of years your mark to that, to be committed.
Thank you. Next item is Dr. Heath, Dr. Daniels, whoever are on the Highland Rim's Committee Report.
Is that me, Mr. Chairman? We met with the Highland Rim School Committee, met last week, last Thursday, I believe. We've scheduled another meeting at the end of July. This time we have nothing to present to the board for consideration.
I appreciate that. We'll look forward to what comes out of the next one. Next item is a service contract, food service.
Mr. Bradley and I talked today, just, yeah, you might want to come up here in case you need to add what I say here. Our contract, the folks who service our cafeteria equipment, that'd be ovens and everything, freezers, everything, notified us that they don't only service, right? So we got to put that out for bid again. That means we've got between now and the next board meeting to worry about, you know, are we going to have any issues with our equipment? So the idea is that if we can go ahead and get a bid out and the bids come back, I want to ask if you guys will consider letting the executive committee accept the lowest bid and go ahead and get that done instead of having to wait until the next board meeting? Because, I mean, Murphy's Law, something's going to break down when we don't have a service company to service the equipment. So that's what our request is. Anything else to add to that?
We always have service calls in July for the freezers and the coolers. There's approximately between $3,000 and $4,000 worth of inventory sitting in each one of our freezers. I did check that as of today. If we have a freezer go out and don't and can't find somebody to meet that response time and that food spoils, we do have to pay SFE back for that food. So I would like to get somebody back on contract so they have to meet our response time. Because at the moment, we're having to find somebody on the open market, and that going rate, I did hear about today, is anywhere from $100 to $125 per hour outside of a contract, per labor hour, so.
And I'd like to add that we met with Ricky today and talking about his folks in an emergency situation. If we can't find somebody to come in, you know, can we, you know, we would like to use our folks to, for an emergency service and pay them accordingly if that needs to be. Knock on wood, hope nothing happens.
What was the previous company?
English, English Service, and they are going to bid. We contacted today. We have about six companies we think that are willing to bid on our next contract. I have no idea what those rates are going to be, and Dina hasn't even sent me the bid yet, but I just wanted them to be aware that it was coming so we could hopefully get that expedited pretty quickly. Because like I said, it is July, and it is, in my world, it's a very real thing. It's always Fourth of July weekend.
Motion.
I make the motion that we allow the executive committee to be.
Except the lowest bid.
To accept the lowest bid when they come in.
Mr. Haynes, second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Haynes, aye. Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Dr. Daniel?
Yes.
Seven and one absent.
Seven and one absent. And motion carries. Next is review of the board policies, item time, opposing.
Tonight, we have one policy to review. You have that in your packet, policy 4.600 grading systems. Earlier tonight, the policy committee recommended making this change, and in order to do this, it's recommended we approve on first and final in order to get it in our hand school handbook.
That's a recommendation from the policy committee that requires a second. Any more discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed likewise? Carriers, do you have?
And that's it.
Next is a report from our review of pay scale, bonus stipend, and supplement. Mr. Tucker?
The committee recommends that we raise the substitute teacher pay to 75 for non-teacher, non-tenured or non-certified, and 85 for certified teachers.
That's a recommendation from the committee again. Any discussion on those figures? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Dr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Haynes, aye. Seven and one absent.
Motion carries. Next is approval of contracts. The first one, is there any, is there a need, does anybody want to pull them out separate or is there a need to pull them, keep them separate? Everybody's had them in the packet? No objection. We've got three contracts, Care, Ceresolace, which is coordinate school health, Tennessee School Assistance for Equity, which is renewal, and then Interquest K-9 Detection. That's a renewal offset. That's a renewal offset. Does anybody, I mean, I've looked at the packet, what they are. Does anybody need any clarification on any of the contracts? Now, we have, the Care Solace, Solace is a new one, correct?
Yes, yes, and I think they presented that.
Right.
Couple times.
Any discussion on any of them? Since one of them is a new one, let's roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. I have a motion to approve.
No move.
Mr. Tucker?
Second.
Mr. Bradley's second. Any other discussion? I know, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Dr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Haynes, aye. Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Seven and one absent.
Motion to those contracts and renewals were accepted. I appreciate that. Next item, there is no facility use. Next item is consider approval of level accounts, level outstanding accounts payable listed below. And one of them is Lincoln Central Academy is payment custodian from the facility use agreement. And the other is Blanche and Highland Rim School owns the football equipment. You want to give an explanation on that?
Yeah, on the first one, the custodian, the facility use is happening right now. So I think it's another day or two.
Right. Right.
Yes, sir.
And then on the other two, there's, all the equipment has not been delivered yet.
Do I have a motion?
No move.
Mr. Tucker makes motion, does second. Mr. Bradley's second. Any discussion on them? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? The next item, again, is the consideration of an old Blanche school for disposition of the property in the same manner that we did Stonebridge Academy. Now, this is not any action that's approvable tonight. All this is a request would be to engage Mr. Sims to draw it up, and if you were looking at the plaque, you would be looking at parcel 44 and parcel 45. And it would be, it would be proposed to draw it up as selling parcel 44 on its own, selling parcel 45, and then give the bidder's option of putting it together and bid on it as a whole.
Mr. Stevenson, is that 45 or 46? It's where the school.
Oh, I'm sorry.
45, is that parcel?
Well, it could, I didn't highlight, ah, it is 46. I'm sorry, 45, but.
So it's 46.
Correction, 46 and 44.
Yeah.
And that would be the options. Now, by the time, if the board goes, and it depends on when Mr. Sims gets done, if it's the next board meeting or the next time bid comes out, this would be late October, probably November, I would suspect, and it may be later than that before anything action would be taken, whether the board wanted to accept, reject, or whatever. That would get the football season through at that, sat there, where we're currently located at. I think everybody knows, Dr. Heath, I would give background on some of the issues of Lick, maybe some Licks, because we're not maintaining it in.
Oh, in the main building?
Yeah, the main building.
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, if you walk in there now, you'd see why we, the board made a great decision when they made it to build that new school, because all the things that we were patching up and our maintenance staff was actually doing to keep the old building, you know, running, it's not happening now, the old building. And I think if you go in there, you'd see, you'd see that, you know, when it rains, you'll see where all the leaks are, I guess.
So the motion tonight would be to engage Mr. Sims to draw up a proposed sale agreement that would be brought back to the board to vote. Just what we're looking at. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to motion to send to Mr. Sims.
Mr. Poe makes motion to send to Mr. Sims. Mr. Sims, second.
Second.
Mr. Bradley's second. Any further discussion on? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Next item is review of meal prices in consideration of possible changes. Mr. Bradley, I think a lot of data there.
Oh, yes, lots and lots. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead, I sent something out to you in the board packet. It is an ever-changing thing in my world right now. So I have actually updated what was originally sent with you with some new numbers that even got changed as of today, based on some legislation that came out and was approved on Friday. So I'm going to go ahead and pass this around to you, just so you have the most recent information. Lay all my stuff out here. So I know this is a discussion, and something that we don't want to consider, because we are feeding children, and that is a very emotional thing to do, and there's a lot of emotions tied to that. But at the end of the day, what a lot of people don't realize, and I know you're well aware of this, but the general public doesn't know that school nutrition operates as a business within the, within the school system. We operate a business where we can't serve what our customers want, even though we know what they want. We have to serve them certain things. We're very limited, so we have a lot of restraints that we have to function in and still support our, our department financially, and it's becoming more and more difficult. So I want to go ahead and run through a few things with you this evening. And the first thing I would like to look at, or just a couple of considerations for you to think about as we go through this, and some of you have been around longer than others, and so you'll remember some of these. The first thing, of course, that I want to talk about is just what's going on in our world in general right now. And you'll see the line at the top in red, that's what's called the producer price index. So that's what the producers are paying right now to produce their goods, whether it be the chicken nuggets, and this is not just child nutrition, this is our economy as a whole, but we are certainly having to operate within the constraints of our economy. So the producer price index is what is in red. And Mr. Bradley, I'm sure you're feeling that real heavy right now trying to get crops in the ground. So producers are paying a lot. Consumer price index is what you see in the blue. So as of right now, you can tell the market hasn't made a correction, and the two haven't come back together yet. The market will correct itself. It always does. So what goes up must come down, so producer cost has got to come down. But also, we're looking at what consumers are paying. Whoop, excuse me there. I got too close and touched it. We're looking at what consumers are paying going up, so it will come back together. The green line that you see there, they call that personal consumption. I was really shocked. You can tell when we came out of COVID with the green line, because everybody was ready to come out and the money was flowing, and then inflation starts to hit, and then those personal expenditures start to slow back down. So in my world, this is something we have to think about, because I don't get to pull the card and say, well, I'm in a school system, so I get a cheaper price. That does not work for us, even though we would like to think that it does, it unfortunately does not. Some other things, in Lincoln County, we've not raised lunch prices since 2019, 20. Before that, it had been a long time since we had raised lunch prices. We've never met the PLE requirement in Lincoln County. That's paid lunch equity, which I'll discuss that just a little bit more in a moment. You guys have continued to do everything possible to avoid raising lunch prices over the years. Lincoln County's been operating on SSO, which is Seamless Summer, and SFSP, which are programs that reimburse, programs that have a higher reimbursement that we, what, excuse me, I can't talk, than what we normally get. So our reimbursements have been inflated the past two years. So while our bottom line looks good, and we have done very well managing our costs, you know, that, that reimbursement's going back down for us, so we have to realize that that's coming. In trying to sit down and figure out what's going to happen in the coming year, I don't have a crystal ball, but I can tell you, I think our cost per meal equivalent is going to run about $3.90. That includes the raise that we just did for labor, that includes the increase with our SFE contract, that includes a slight increase. Now, I will tell you, I think the increase in our maintenance contract is probably going to be more than I estimated. I probably underestimated that, given some of the numbers I got back today. So that does make me a little uneasy, but around $3.90 is what I'm expecting our cost per meal equivalent to be. A meal equivalent, you can think of as a lunch, and then to calculate other meal equivalents for breakfast and à la carte, we base that off of our lunch number. So it's two breakfasts for every one lunch, 305 for every one lunch equals one meal equivalent. So that's kind of a, a wonky thing, but in my world, that's how we calculate and we see how we're doing. Having to estimate the lunch reimbursement for 2022, 23 is very difficult. Historically, they pay, based it off of CPI, which I've gone back and tracked like the past 10 years, and historically, it's pretty much followed along. So I was feeling pretty good about my original numbers and my original recommendations, but on Friday, and I'll come back to what happened Friday in just a minute, I feel like the reimbursement base that they set may be a little lower than what I had originally anticipated, because there's additional monies coming into our program. So you'll see that maybe I lowered some of my recommendations a little bit, and that would be why. Estimated free lunch reimbursement as of Friday is $4.38, and I'll again come back to that in a second. Number seven, just, I just need to put it out there, the equipment that we have got to replace. The estimated cost of that's $450,000. It is a very tough environment right now. We ordered two ovens for Highland Rim, May 27 of last year, and they were just installed last week. So even getting equipment is going to be tough right now, but there, there are things that we need to upgrade in order to provide better food for our students. Those ovens at Blanche are some of the best ovens. Once we got them fixed, and once we got them working, they really do turn out a good product. So I think our kids would appreciate those upgrades, especially in some of our older schools, and hopefully help our participation a little bit, and reduce our maintenance costs. Am I missing anything? Okay, so paid lunch equity, I was talking about that a little bit earlier. So what exactly is paid lunch equity? So if you've been around for a while, you've probably heard us come in, and you've heard either me or Stephanie or, you know, our core consultant, whoever's presenting, talk about, well, y'all are behind on paid lunch equity. So basically, they're trying to make sure we're not subsidizing a paid student's meal with funds that we bring in from a free student's meal, okay? So we have pretty much been able to justify the non-federal income, because you have two salaries that you pay that are not out of school nutrition, they come out of GP, and then also, all of our à la carte sales is considered non-federal funds. So typically, I wasn't too worried about it, because if anybody said anything, there were enough funds coming from other places to offset and say, well, we are offsetting it, and here's how we're doing that. Moving forward, I don't know that we'll be able to continue to do that, because I don't know what's about to happen. So paid lunch equity, again, normal measure, used across the country, and in a normal operating year, our weighted lunch price should be $3.31 if you're using the PLE tool. We are nowhere near that. We've been operating just fine. Even before COVID, we were on schedule to make, and I say may, but to profit approximately $80,000 at the end of that school year, which we would have then turned around and used for equipment. Remember, the goal is to hit a break even here, and it's not to make a whole lot of money, but we do want to operate a sustainable program. So in a normal year, we wouldn't be hitting the $3.31, and so the state would come in and say, okay, you don't have to make the full jump to $3.31, but you do have to go up by 6.04%. And you see that down at the bottom there somewhere. And then that's usually when we all come together and we decide what to do with paid lunch equity, and hopefully you would raise the prices and we would go on. We've not, excuse me, not done that. Meals have been free. There's been no need to do that. Other school systems across the country have been doing the same thing, because we've had other things on our plate, and a paid lunch price is not something that we've been concerned about. I do want to be forthcoming with you and let you know that there is a waiver this year. The waiver says that we can use federal funds to offset the expenses incurred in school nutrition. So basically, if you decide not to raise lunch prices, we can dip into our fund balance in school nutrition and cover the difference. And I have some figures for you in just a moment as to what I think that will cost. So that is an option. So I've been talking a lot about paid lunch equity, and we haven't really had a good PLE calculator. I've got to come to the other side. I can't keep talking from behind that table. So I've been talking about paid lunch equity. We've not really had a good tool since 1819, because in 1920, we didn't have the data. So basically, what I did was use the 1819 calculator. All of this still calculates the same, it's the information at the bottom that would change, okay? So that's why you see 1819 on all of those. So going into 1920, we had a paid lunch equity price of $2.28. We should have been at $3. Remember, I told you we were on track to break even that year, so we were good. Then I turned around and calculated, what do we need to do to get to the 3.31? Because I'm curious. To get us to full paid lunch equity and a weighted price of $3.34, our K-8 price would need, or yes, K-8 price would need to be 3.25, and high school would need to be 3.50. So that is an option. Then I got to thinking, what does paid lunch equity say if I'm just trying to get us to our break even point? Because remember, our goal is not to profit a whole lot, we want to take care of our kids and support our business. So we needed to be at about 3.03 with the weighted lunches. And guys, I pulled these from our last normal participation semester to try to take all the craziness out of it, and so that's how I determined the number of lunches for, excuse me, for the month. So this needed to be about 3.03. If we did 2.95 for pre-K through 8 and 3.25 for high school, that puts us at 3.06, which puts us right in the ballpark of where we need to be. So that's kind of what these three numbers are, working off of weighted averages, because our little guys eat way more than our high school kids do. Do I have questions about that before I go on? That's really a lot to kind of digest. So then on Friday, we had a nice little surprise. There's federal legislation that has come out, and so they were lobbying for a number of things. Several things got cut out, this got passed by unanimous consent, so there will be an additional 40 cents for each lunch, an additional 15 cents for each breakfast reimbursement. So in my estimate, a paid lunch reimbursement for us going into next year would have been 47 cents. That's based on a 6% increase. Then you turn around and add another 40 cents to it, that puts that reimbursement at 87 cents. That puts that reimbursement at 87 cents for a paid lunch. So we have to come up with enough money, the 303 roughly in there, to cover that difference of 390 and then what we're gonna get from a paid lunch reimbursement. So that's kind of what I was really working off of. The meal pattern waiver extension, that just really helps us out. If we can't get what we need, if we can't meet the meal pattern, they're still gonna reimburse us for those meals this year. There have been times when we couldn't get milk. We couldn't get enough milk deliveries because one time the milkman had a wreck on the way to the school. So we, they still allowed us to claim those meals instead of, for that particular day. But that's what that is, if we can't meet the meal pattern. The summer meal waiver extension doesn't apply to us. Our summer school finished up before the end of June. There are schools that will operate summer school only until July, and will have a summer feeding program. They were scheduled to go back to normal SSO operation and requirements after June 30th, and now they don't have to, so that does not apply to us. So what is all this stuff that I've been talking, talking to you about mean? So here's the bottom line. This is where we currently are. This is what our current prices are. If we do nothing, and you say, we don't wanna do anything with lunch prices, we're gonna stay the way they are. We need to be prepared to pay 400, and this is even with the additional 40 cents. We need to be prepared to pay $425,000 out of fund balance this year to cover that difference.
Cafeteria fund balance.
Cafeteria fund balance, yes. But you don't want me to take it out of yours? That whole full PLE that I was talking about, and I am not recommending this at all, please know that. But if we were to meet the full requirement according to USDA and go to this set of prices, we would profit $350,000. I think this is, is a bit much. So then, I told you there was a minimum PLE requirement in a normal operating year, which was the increase of 6.04%. So if we just do the minimum, we need to be prepared to pay $381,250 roughly as fund balance. Cafeteria fund balance. These were the lunch prices I came up, came up with that would put us exactly at break even prior to Friday's legislation coming out. So at that point, we would not have made anything. I recalculated it after the Keep Kids Fed Act, which is what they're calling this, came out on Friday. I readjusted. And so if we kept my recommended prices after that act came out, we would profit $250,000 next year roughly. And I think that is being a bit generous. Again, that's an option. The other one that I looked at and that I went back and added today, and again, you kind of have to make the business side and the emotional side of it. We do wanna take care of our kids. We are in a good position for the first time in a long time in school nutrition. We do have the fund balance at the moment to replace the equipment that we need, and it is desperately needed. So kind of a halfway point that I came up with, and my recommendation is gonna be in between these two. Okay? The reason I went with this is because I would like to have some cushion in there for us. My maintenance or our maintenance contract, that's again, not something I was counting on. And just for comparison, we were paying $72.50 an hour for labor. And one of the quotes I got back today, if I have to call during this time without a contract, they normally charge $125 an hour, but they'll charge us $100 an hour. That's a 25% increase. So that can have quite a financial bearing on the coming year also. I also don't know what's gonna happen with some of our other things. I really am expecting stuff to go up. Contracts we negotiated in August have already been broken. Excuse me, in April have already been broken. They said, we can't honor this. This is what you'll pay, or you don't get it. What do you do? I mean, we wanna feed our kids stuff that they like. So at the moment, SFE is absorbing that cost, but they can only do that so long. I mean, really. And if you've been watching the news in the coming months, as far as food prices, we ain't seen nothing yet. So that does have me really concerned, moving in especially into the fall and into early next year. So again, this is kind of what I base my recommendation on, and that's one.
Sure.
Before we leave that, can you, the, the very bottom of the last two columns?
Yes.
Explain that, how those numbers, because it looks like the recommendation is higher than the break even, but on the bottom, it looks reversed, and I don't quite.
This is the, this is the money that would be made because this has an additional 40 cents added into it from the federal government. Oh, sorry.
All right, now what? Okay.
So this has that, this is my original recommendation. Then we had $40 added into it from the federal government, so I just subtracted that straight off of this. No, did I do that? Now you're making me second guess myself.
I'm sorry, I, I.
And I was so confident this afternoon.
Yeah, just, just the bottom, the bottom two cells on, on the last two columns, over the bottom cell, that almost looked backwards to me, unless there's something I'm not understanding. And I'm sorry to have to ask you this in the middle of this presentation.
No, I understand what you're saying. I think that's what I did.
Because the 125 would be between the break even and the 250, halfway. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I was going for. I do wanna say too with this, you'll see that the cost of staff breakfast does not change. The cost for visitor and staff lunch does not change. It's because we have to charge whatever the cost is, whatever the paid lunch reimbursement is. We cannot charge less than that for those items. This may be as low as 401, I don't know, but I'm expecting it to be between 401 and 405 for a paid lunch reimbursement. I don't think we have to cover that additional 40 cents that was recently given out. That would make no sense to me. I've reached out, and nobody's answered. Nobody's gonna answer questions about that for at least another month, if I had to guess, because it'll have to go through communications before that can respond.
Our fund balance is what, is where it is because we're, two years it's been free across the boards. Remember that? This, our fund balance can just poof off of our regular deal. Second thing coming forward is we'll be negotiating, and that'll be at the, is it on discussion start, let's retreat about the coming year of having to rebid the contract?
That's, I mean, you and I talked about it. We haven't really done the agenda or asked for agenda.
We've got, the decision will have to be made again, because it'll have to be bid. The time's up on that contract. Either we go with another company or, or we look at coming back in hives. But we're gonna be well ahead of behind, of course, they will, yeah. Well, that's the rebid. I mean, we, I mean, we gotta rebid it.
Right, I know, but if you said we have to look at going with another company or staying in house.
Oh, yeah. But when I say rebid, I mean, it could be SFE again, or it could be one of the others that bid. And the deal with inflation, because we're gonna pull, if we pull 450 out of fund balance, is that today, is that gonna leave 600 something dollars or 700?
We're right at 900,000.
Okay, so that's the last one I thought it was. So, so then if you, if we leave the status quo and write that check, and then we're looking at the food costs, if we start breaking contracts or somehow this thing gets out, why SFE says, careful, we can't handle this more. We gotta do something different. I mean, I think we're gonna have to do something with price, but is this something to, have we got to know tonight? To make the motion tonight, a recommendation? Because if not, the next board meeting's gonna be around when the school starts. I assume you're gonna want something tonight.
Is this food price, do you think we go up or down 10, 15%?
I mean, that's what we need to know, correct?
Yes, it would be, it would be very advantageous because parents are gonna want to know this, and you know, it's gonna take a lot of communication so families know because if somebody wants dinner day warning, their child starts charging meals and they don't know what prices are, it's really gonna jump up with them quick.
It's one of these things where we can't just keep kicking this can down the road. I, I'd like to make a motion that we go with the recommendation in green, the line in green.
Does that give us, does that give us a little texture?
Yes, sir.
Gets us above zero breaking?
Yes.
Okay, gets us, okay.
You wanna go 2B, red.
Yeah, right. Is it directly opposite, or is your calculator need to be reshot?
What was your question, I'm sorry?
Are we, are we switching the numbers and know that's right, or we just need to run down and hit the sum all again, make sure of numbers?
Do you have four minutes? Would you calculate that outside of the spread sheet?
I calculated it outside, but it'll take me like just a second.
So they mean the end of this.
They can't be listening, man.
No, but I, I'm gonna let you do what we're saying.
So the food, I was looking for it a while ago. I found a USDA report over the weekend showing poultry, about 20 something cents, the next.
Oh my gosh, he's gonna get us.
The beans and the fruit, I don't know which cereal was available.
And guess what our kids want? Chicken.
One thing I might first keep, keep in mind is that people are already stretched.
Yes, those are break even. So our break even.
I, I think you do have to take into account that our families are already stretched with gas, with groceries, that, I mean, their grocery meals, they're, they're, you know, I just want us to keep that in mind, you know? If we want kids to continue to pay and continue to come, I mean, you don't want them to have to, I mean, you don't want them bringing their lunches, you know, but I, I just think we need to take that into consideration.
So I went and looked today. At Walmart right now, a Lunchable is a $1.85, just a Lunchable that has crackers, cheese. And if you've seen one, some of you may send them with your kids or your grandkids, $1.85. And that doesn't even include something to drink, and that's our biggest competition in the school cafeteria. So they're paying over $2 right now to send their lunch. Okay. All right, break even was 29.
A large bag of chips is $7. A large, medium sized bag of chips now is $7.
Okay, so, and I'm sorry, I'm not good at doing my math on the spot here. And I will tell you one thing, I did round to the nearest nickel in these because we don't wanna be dealing with pennies in the cafeteria. So I did do that.
So it would be $3 for 9 to 12 lunch, right?
Okay.
I thought she said she rounded it.
They are rounding. $3.05.
They do it 305, or they rounded it off to $3 and $4?
So what I did here is correct, and let me tell you what I did. So our increased price to cover our estimated expenses. And this will not let me move on my computer. Okay, so those are options that you have where I calculated our approximate meal equivalent to $625,000. Now somebody help me with this. At break even, option number four would have been this right here. Then if we kept our prices, or if we took the 40 cents off.
But that's where the difference is, you said if you add.
Yeah. So what I did is went and subtracted off of this right here. And so if I subtracted the full percentage off, then this would still be break even. It would be the lower price. So I should not have put that down there, and it is my apologies. This would be the halfway between the two, and that's where I was calculating.
So is that 125 correct?
The 125 is correct. This is not. I shouldn't have put my calculations in there.
Do I have a motion for recommendation? I stick with my motion, stick, go with the recommendation in the green. President makes a motion, Mr. Tucker, second, you know, discussion. I guess we'll call it on this, please.
And that's going to the recommended, the green one, right? Okay.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cozy?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Dr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mrs. Haynes? Mr. Bradley?
Uh.
Mr. Stevenson?
Uh.
Well, Karen, I appreciate the time and effort to work.
Have you got, you got inflation built into this?
Right, y'all just added it in.
You got it added in. Because it's gonna go up.
Thank you.
And Miss Vicky, come on down.
My stuff's not always interesting because I'm late.
We'll let you do this, Fred. She might redo the hard stuff last. All right, you guys.
A few, a few budget amendments.
Does anybody want anything pulled out, sir? Then you're gonna do it with the amendments all at once, yeah?
Okay. All right, so the first page is the state pre-K grant and the local pre-K grant. The state is in the amount of $7,067.30. The local grant is in the amount of $29,272.74. Then there's a budget amendment for the Department of Transportation, Fiscals and Fuel Purchases in the amount of $18,000. The next one is amendment needed based on actual final payrolls in the amount of $4,400. The next one is in the amount of $124,880. This is requested by Mr. Keith Gill, and this will, amendment will allow him for the purchase of three buses. Then in 142, the amendment for $200,000 is to set up the best of all district federal grant. And then 143 centralized cafeteria fund budget amendment in the amount of $15,750 is to revise the year-end budget and payroll estimates. Then in 177, education capital projects fund, we are requesting amendment of $35,000 to cover trustees' commissions through 6/30/2022.
Please, by Dan Quince, all those amendments. Do I have a motion to accept? Approved, is it approved? Mr. Tucker makes a motion, does that say? Mr. Bradley, say. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All in black lines?
Can they just, the note on the financials, they're still completed at this time as we're just beginning the process of closing up fiscal year?
All out, you would.
Did I get the second set? That you like 2022?
We're gonna present that, who's at the next?
Thank you, ma'am. All out, wait. What's Keith Gill doing with all that gas? The bus ain't running here in summer. What, what, what?
You didn't give me that money for last year.
I just wanted.
All right, both information. Number one, the, the TSBA Fall District Meeting. Karen, do we, do we need to know who's planning on attending already? It's September 15th, and it's in Franklin County, I do know what school.
I thought, where's that, North?
So it's at North. I figured it was one of the new schools over there.
Usually we have to register our big day by like about 4:30 to get sort of, it's a little bit late here about an hour. Probably about 3:45 or 4:00. I'll get some details and send them out, too.
So will you be, I mean, how soon do we need to know that, Karen? For planning purposes?
By the next board meeting.
By next board meeting?
We've got to get our seven hours. That's a whole different.
This is a, this is the one we've been able to do virtually ever since COVID. And I don't think they're gonna allow that this year, who I understand, so. No. No. Sixty dollars a person and.
It does, we do have to have a majority of the board attend to maintain our board of distinction.
All right.
That may have to be announced at night also. Board of distinction will be that night, possibly, yes, but I think they do announce lots of awards. Yeah.
So just let Karen just send something out and everybody just respond, let her know. Mr. Tucker and Dr. Daniel will be attending the TSBA Summer Law Institute, July twenty first through twenty third in Gatlinburg.
That does count as their.
And that counts as, for, for your credits. Days for the summer retreat, August fifteenth and the sixteenth if needed. Those are two evenings. We haven't set a time yet.
Probably five thirty.
Five thirty. Five thirty. Couple of things, a couple of, three things that I know have been talked about. One is, I mentioned this back in the fall or wintertime when we started our strategic planning at the school levels and we have taken that at the school level with all the communities there. And it has sort of filtered up to the district level. We met a couple of days this, this past week and we will have our recommended, or our administrative anyway, and recommended strategic plan for the district. And, and I'd like for all the schools to present quickly, you know, in maybe ten to fifteen minutes per school, their strategic plans, so that's the big thing that, that I had planned. Security, Dr. Daniel mentioned the other night, what we can talk about security wise, at that meeting would be good to, you know, following the, the mess in Texas last month. So it'd be good for us to, to update everybody on what we can update you on, on that. And then earlier tonight, Mr. Stevenson brought up the, what was it you brought up for that? That we've told them about, the food service, RFP. So that's the three things right now. Karen, we'll send out Google form for everybody, anybody who's put anything else on there and see what fills up for those two nights or that one night. We've done it one night in the past and in some years we've kind of do it two nights, so.
And we had that number five, I think that's what we were looking for those two.
Yep. So that's number two. Number three, I mean, that is number three. Number four. Review of employee health insurance packages, that is, is on our annual agenda for this month. But it will be at the July twenty eighth meeting with a vote on those packages to follow at the September first meeting. The increases of six point one percent, is that right, Vicki? Six point one percent is what the state increase is to the local level. That doesn't kick into mid-year, so this doesn't put anybody behind the eight ball or anything. Changes wouldn't occur until mid-year anyway. So this is plenty of time to get that done. So that's, that'll be presented at the July meeting with a month to review and then on the September meeting, have our, have a vote on that. Exit surveys results, I put this on here each, each year this time. Just want to remind you, those have been put in your files, in your folders, so you can look at those. Administrators have reviewed those and had some discussion about it recently. We haven't, we haven't had a lot yet, but we've got a couple of meetings coming up in July, a couple of days and we'll, we'll finish our discussion on those. Whole child updates, suicide prevention updates. Carmen, Terry, Lucy, your partner?
Next month, I think, and we're policy, the new addition to the suicide prevention policy will be up and some very short additions. The policy that came down from TSBA now has us add that if you have a badge, you have to have a suicide prevention number on the badge and that all schools make sure that they have posted in a prominent place, suicide prevention numbers. And we have those posted anyway and we don't require badges of students. So we're already in compliance with updates on suicide prevention. Whole child update, we, the addition of the CARESOLIS contract tonight allows us to provide more mental health supports for students and their families and our staff. This is going to be a service that's provided to anyone, if we have a student, one student in our system, the service is also available to anybody else in that household and same for staff. It will allow this company to find mental health providers and hook them up with the providers that will provide them with whatever service they need. From the nutrition piece, we continue, are going to continue to partner with Second Harvest out of Nashville to try to get additional food box pickups available throughout the county this year. They also help us with our Friday programs, our box backpacks of blessings programs. But this past year, we added the food box pickup available to anybody. There are no, you don't have to be, have any qualifying factor in your family to be able to drive through and pick up these food boxes. As far as the physical activity piece, we do have PD scheduled with the PE teachers in July and we will have the state PE specialist that will be providing them with new best practice ideas to get them the most bound for the block in PE so we can get more activity with our students. We're back in full, full gear with our screenings, our BMI, vision, hearing. COVID kind of put, put us a little bit behind on that, but this year we've done all of our screenings again to get our more updated BMI information and of course do the referrals for vision, hearing and blood pressure. Any, any whole child questions?
I just want to know if we're okay on our counselors, social workers for the fall?
Social worker, yes, we're still down two counselors. We all approved on the budget to do the counselor, itinerary counselor for South and for Holleram and for a counselor for here. We have had several inquiries, but the problem is, is that we haven't had a large number of already certified counselors that are applying. I think I talked to Chrissy, Miss Ryan, about that this afternoon. I think there's some applications. I'm not sure how many of them actually have their certification, but. So we have two counselor positions.
So if, let me ask, if, if we have a difficulty finding them, if there is a teacher that's, that's in the process of going to school, can we, can we receive their waiver for that? If you cannot. So they have to have their certification in order to do that.
And we are going to fill, first choice, if we only get one qualified applicant, it will be, it will revert back to what we were previously doing with the itinerary counselor. They split between South, Holleram and this building. And then if we can get another one, then we, that will have a choice then, would you like to continue itinerary with South and Holleram or have the full composition here and then wait the other one?
All right, the last thing, thank you, Carmen. The last thing is the board member training catalogs of TSBA. It's all in, it's at your seats there, just review that, of course, and there are some changes from the way that's been done in the past. So I would recommend just reviewing that, looking through there. And I believe the courses have been approved for a three year, is that right, Karen? For two thousand twenty five, for a three year rotation or, or to be offered for the next three years. The vendors have been approved for that, so that'd be basically your catalog of events, I mean, catalog of courses for the next three years. Of course, the dates probably just this year end the catalog, so next year you're going to double, but it'll be the same, the same courses.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Ms. Stevens, Mr. Chair, can I make a, can I say something?
I mean, is it a general item that needs to be added again when we pick it up next month? I mean, that's a whole part of them, of, of, of them, again.
Well, I was wondering if I could, okay, so if I want something added to the work session, then I can just have it added later?
Yeah, just send it, that's what you said.
It was something I was wanting to bring up at the committee with our scale and balance, but apparently that committee's already ended, so I didn't get to bring it up.
Yeah, just send, send, Ms. Karen, when it comes, anything you want to say, just send it.
So just say, Ms. Karen, then have it added?
Yep.
All right.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Omen.
That's it? Sick, all in favor, please say aye. Thank you.